Order. Um, roll call, everybody's here except for Lou. Apparently Lou is going to be gone.
Lou does have a commitment tonight, so he will not be here.
Um, additions to the agenda, it looks like we have, um, additions to, um...
The consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yep.
And we have, it looks like consent agendas eight, nine, ten. And then we want underneath informational report.
Um, we will add Max, and I'm not sure that David will come, so with conferences, we weren't sure how that would all shake out. But Max, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to neglect you.
All right.
Just make it short.
So with those additions, with those additions, I entertain a motion?
Uh, one other piece, um, for business, I'm sorry, Mark, I forgot. Uh, we're going to just remove, uh, under business, we're going to move the math department. We thought we would be able to work them in for today, uh, even though there were conferences, and as we started to try to shake it out, because there's some technology they want to show, it just became very difficult. So we'll move them back probably to the second meeting in, in December, when, um, we have the students coming in, so it'll be an early one, and we will, we will add them to that probably, but we'll remove that from this agenda if that's all right with the board.
Remove number four from the business?
Correct.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
So I got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions?
Yes, actually, uh, it says Wednesday, November 21st, it should be Tuesday.
On the agenda?
On the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Ah, what the heck. We're just going to change the date.
I have a check mic.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I don't know. My magic fingers must have really been working. Sorry about that, I apologize to the board, but we will adjust that, um, to Tuesday.
Tuesday, alright.
Thank you.
Good catch. You know, I read it too, and I thought it did click in my brain either. So we're going to change that, so.
We just proposed the agenda.
Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Um, we're going to go move to District 741 is proud of. The two FFA teams who completed, competed in Alexandria on October 11th, both teams will advance to state. Uh, the floriculture team placed first. Team members are Donna Horn, uh, placed first, she's a 12th grader. Sophie Blankel is, uh, placed fourth, and she's a sophomore. Uh, Evelyn McAdams is placed seventh, she's a senior. Eva Horn placed ninth, she's a freshman. Eliza Carlson, grade 11. Um, and then the nursery, uh, and landscape team placed second. Team members are Brooke Karsh, placed fifth, grade 10. Katie Hanson placed seventh, she's a freshman. Angelica Tello, uh, placed eighth, she's a ninth grader, and Kelly Workalot, grade ninth. So that we're proud of. Anybody here for public comment? Okay, they'll move on to approve and correct the minutes from the October 24th, 2017 regular school board meeting. Should be in your packets.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I got a motion from Cheryl, a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Financial reports, the October Treasurers report, Bob?
Everything seems to be working the way it's supposed to be working, so really no changes. Certainly you'll hear about the audit today, so that'll give you more information on last year's, but for right now, things are going the way they should.
Alrighty. So I got a motion from, um, Heidi. A second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Audit and approval of the bills, we have the October, uh, the additional October 2017 bills, and then the November 2017 bill. Cheryl?
I was able to audit the bills, um, it was all normal business. I did notice that, uh, we bought some more iPads, our technology monies are being used well. And, uh, the football and track tower was in the bills also, and I just wanted to mention how nice it looks out there, quite an improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, everything was as normal, and I would make the motion to pay the bills.
Alright, so I got a motion from Cheryl.
I'll second.
Second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Consent agenda, we have quite a few things underneath the consent agenda, so just bear with me. Um, review and consider approval of, uh, accepting the following donations. We have a hundred and twenty dollars from Adam and Peg Schaefer. We have $25 donation by Tom and Becky Meyer. A $200, uh, donation from Kurt and Amy Mossman. A hundred and twenty dollar donation by Michael and Stephanie Hemisch. $10 donation from Cynthia Hess. We have welding coats and gloves from Litchfield Bobcat and Kevin Belkamp. We also have another $250 donation for the football fan bus from Rototroper, and then the cost of two football fan buses from the Painesville, uh, area Booster Club.
And just to let the board know, it's in your addendum, but the first five are donated to the elementary school. That's where those funds will go.
Okay. Was there a special thing that they were, or is it just...
Um, I don't, uh, Dave didn't mention that to me, just said that those were donated to the elementary.
Okay. Uh, number two, review and consider approval of accepting the resignation for Tracy Peepenberger, junior high wrestling coach for effective November 22nd, 2017. Review and consider approval of hiring Erica Renkey, a paraprofessional for five hours and, five and a half hours per week, or five days per, per week, effective November 15th, 2017. Review and consider approval to hire Erica Renkey, POS program assistant, for one hour per day for five days per week, effective November 15th, 2017. Review and...
And just so the board knows, that's just replacing people who we have in charge, so those aren't, those are not new positions, I don't think.
You don't think?
They're not new positions.
Okay, alright. Review and consider approval of a childcare leave for Katie Bonker, preschool plus, effective approximately February 1st, April, through April 3rd, 2018. Review and consider approval of the following non-athletic assignments for the 2017-18 school year. Uh, we have sixth grade winter camp, Jessica Schultz, and then a one-act play, uh, it's going to be split between Jesse Rasmussen and David Simila. Uh, number seven, review and consider hiring Heidi Riley, duplicator, for 10 hours per week, effective November 27th, 2017. And then we have...
The targeted services, number eight, review and consider...
I'm trying to get to that. Yeah. I didn't get it out of my... It closed before I could get up. Okay, review and consider approval of the following, uh, Painesville area targeted service, um, teachers for the 2017-18 school year, effective November 28th, 2017, through April 18th, 2018. Jennifer Wertz, 48 hours, and Kim Jones, 48 hours.
And the target services cost neutral.
And then review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the 2017-18 school year. We have ninth grade boys basketball, David Wilkie. Assistant basketball coach, Chad Campbell. Assistant girls' basketball coach, Rick Hendrickson, and junior high wrestling, Ben Borgans, uh, Borgener. Uh, review and consider of, approval of accepting the following donation, um, ANC Farm Services, the Kern family, uh, for safety glasses for the CTE courses for the vocational building, and anonymous, anonymous committee service member for $50 for the fan bus. So those are your consent agenda. And we...
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
So I got a motion from Rick, no, I've got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, and Heidi is going to abstain from this one. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Alright. Uh, review and consider... My board packet. It's having a... It's a fit. There it is. Technology is wonderful, isn't it? Uh, review and consider approval of our audit for the 2016-17 school year, and we have, uh, the auditors here, and I failed to remember what your... What's your first name?
Ryan Schmidt.
Ryan Schmidt will be presenting it.
Alright. Much anticipation for this, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, my name's Ryan Schmidt, I'm a manager with Schlatter-Winner &amp; Company. Um, I believe this is our third year doing your audit. Um, each of you should have three packets in front of you, two of them with blue hardbound cover, and those are basically the formal reports, the formal results of the audit, and then you should also have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, which they're bringing up on the big screen right now, and this is basically a summary of the other two reports, so this way we don't have to flip through everything and go back and forth. So, with that being said, uh, to go to the first slide, um, we're going to start out by kind of talking about the audit process and how the audit works. We're going to then go over the results of the audit a little bit, and then we'll dig into the numbers. Um, so basically, how an audit works is we show up and we get your client records, we get, um, all the numbers from the district, we get all your financial data, and then we perform various procedures such as inquiries, detailed testing, analytical procedures, and based on the result of those procedures, that's how we develop an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented.
Do you want me to click through this instead? It seems to be automatically running on its own.
Oh, yeah, if you want to.
Oh, just let me know when, then.
Okay, okay. So we're still on slide number one. The one after the cover slide. Um, but basically, so we perform these procedures to express an opinion, the opinion that we've given you this year is an unmodified or a clean opinion, so that's the best opinion you can hope to achieve. Looking at the next page, also says audit results at the top. Um, we don't only look at the numbers when we come out for the audit, we also look at what kind of accounting policies you have in place, we look at what kind of accounting treatments you're applying, uh, we look if you have any unusual or strange transactions, or if there's any weird estimates in the financial statements, and we don't have any concerns in any of these areas. Um, the one thing that I do want to point out is that there is a significant estimate in the financial statements for how much is due from the Minnesota Department of Education at the end of the year. If you were to go to MDE right now and ask them how much they're going to pay you for FY17, they still don't know as of today. It'll take them almost until the end of FY18 to have that number completely nailed down. So that's always considered an estimate, so it's just something to be aware of. And finally, this is just a summary of how the audit went, how the process went, we didn't have any significant issues or difficulties, we didn't have any disagreements with management, uh, no issues along those lines, everything went very smoothly.
I tried to come up with some disagreements.
It's true, he tries pretty hard to, to get us riled up, but, uh, we sidestepped the best we can. Um, okay, so the next page, audit adjustments. You know, I talked about how we perform these different procedures so that we can arrive at an opinion, while as we're performing these procedures, sometimes we come in, we run into account balances, or we run into things that maybe need a bit of an adjustment to get to that proper presentation for the final financial statements. So, basically, instead of, uh, just throwing our hands up and giving you a, a poor opinion, we post whatever adjustments are necessary, so that we can get you that clean, unmodified opinion. So because of that, because we did have some adjustments, there is a finding in financial statements for telling the readers that we made some adjustments, which is typical, we've had that every year.
Yeah, and is that typical, Ryan, with other districts also? This is not something that we're alone on?
No, it's typical. Yeah, I'd say maybe 60, 70%, maybe even more, have the same finding, so it's pretty common.
Could you give the board, because it did come up as a question, on what some of those adjustments might be that are caused?
Sure, sure, so we have some year-end things that only get adjusted at the end of the year, maybe for, um, how much interest is accrued on your debt, or maybe how much vacation payable you have, or, um, what your, what your payables are for your summer wages that get paid out, because those are considered to be related to the previous year. Um, so these are all these year-end adjustments that, they don't really affect your day-to-day reporting, or what's in your financial reports that you see on a monthly basis, but it's these year-end adjustments that we help you out with. Okay. The next page, um, here we'll get into a few other internal control findings. Uh, this is an extremely common one, pretty much every district we audit has this finding, and it relates to a lack of segregation duties within the accounting department. Um, and this is just due to the size of the district. Um, you know, ideally, you'd have a setup, something like the graphic here, where you've got, you know, a business manager with multiple accountants underneath, and then that way you can, you can split out all the different pieces of every accounting function to all these different people, and have, you know, checks and balances in place, um, but it's just not, not feasible for a district your size to have a staff that big. The next page, uh, we have another finding here, another very common one, related to the fact that we do prepare your financial statements on your behalf. So when I talk about your financial statements, I mean that big blue packet that I passed out. Um, and basically, this is required to be a finding, because, um, I think the idea here is that, because I'm an external, a third party, I don't know the district maybe as well as what somebody would who works at the district all year round, so there's maybe more of a chance that something might be missed, um, something along those lines, but, but, you know, you do have the advantage of relying on a third party with, um, their expertise as well, so. Okay, so another thing we look at during the audit is your compliance with various Minnesota statutes. This is something the office of the state auditor makes us do. Um, so this kind of honeycomb graphic here shows all the different areas of compliance that we look at, um, and for each one of these areas, there's a checklist that's maybe five or six pages long, and we go through this checklist, and we make sure you're in compliance with each one of these statutes in the checklist. And we didn't have any compliance findings this year, except for one, uh, related to a project that was wrapped up during the year. Um, so there's the statute that states that whenever you have a project with a contractor that gets wrapped up, um, that contractor actually needs to submit a withholding affidavit to the state of Minnesota, and this withholding affidavit is supposed to prove that that contractor made the proper withholdings on its employees' wages, and the way that the state monitors this and makes sure that it's done, is it puts it on you as the district to make sure that before you make final payment to that contractor, you're supposed to get proof that they submitted this withholding affidavit. So it's, it's actually a fairly common finding, because, well, it's not very well-known until after the fact, when we come in and tell you, well, technically, you should have done it.
Yeah, and for instance, our, our elementary window project, we didn't have the issue because we worked through a, uh, an architect firm, who was aware of that. It was the, um, the UHL project that we didn't understand that we need to get that, because that project, we kind of did on our own, we didn't really use an architect or anybody to go through with that one. So now that we're aware of it, Donnie and I have already talked about what we need to do to make sure that we get that in, in future years.
Okay.
So the district kept having it on file that we got it?
Yeah.
So you still, you have to still go to them and get it?
We've already had the finding, we've talked to Yule, um, about getting one where we need to get it.
Well, and technically, it's supposed to happen before you make the final payment to them, that it's kind of like to force them to go out and actually submit that withholding affidavit. At this point, you've already made the final payment, you can ask them to do it, but they don't have much to say, they don't actually do it.
But technically, we don't need to have it on file.
Yeah, technically, you should have it on file.
Technically, we should?
You should.
We've, we've asked Yule for it, we have not gotten it at this point.
It's, it's a one-time thing, so it won't be a finding again next year.
Yeah, this, this is where we, Ryan and I did some talking about my frustration with why we should get docked for something that really, in my opinion, should be the state's responsibility, not ours. I didn't win.
Okay. Um, so the next area, student activity accounts. Um, so this is something MDE has us do as part of the audit. Um, MDE is very specific with how a district is supposed to have their student activity accounts operated, and has very specific criteria on how you're supposed to document your disbursements and the approvals that are supposed to be in place. Um, so we've got a few findings here again this year. One of these findings, the first one here, relates to, uh, missing signed check request. Um, this, this was actually a check request that wasn't signed at all, so we did have the check request, it was just missing the proper signatures. Um, another one here is when there's an account that's been inactive for more than two years, a student activity account, technically, that student activity account is supposed to be closed out. Um, there were a couple, I think gymnastics and middle school play that haven't had any activity in a couple of years. Um, and then we had a few disbursements that, that didn't have any invoices attached, so it's, it's not that they looked improper, it's just they didn't have an attached invoice.
Yeah, and I think this would be an area that I think, when I talked with Ryan about, we've come a long ways...
Yeah, yeah.
From, from our last audit, so we'll...
It's improved every year, but the thing about student activities is there's so many people involved, there's so many, you know, there's a different person in charge monitoring each student activity, you've got to get a lot of people on board following, you know, these required processes. Okay, so we'll finally get into the numbers here, um, but the first thing I like to do when I get into the numbers is look at the pupil units, um, over the past few years, because this is really what drives your revenues and what drives a lot of your numbers. Um, so here, we've got 2014 through 2017, what's happened with your pupil units, um, we've got it broken out, pre-K through six is the red bar, and then seven through 12 is green. Um, overall, last year, you had 933 pupil units, 2017, you have 949, so that's an increase of 16, um, which pretty much entirely took place in your seven through 12 range. You actually had a slight decrease in K through six, but it's been pretty steady for the last few years.
And, and that was caused because we lost a small class. More than anything, I wish I could say that a number of students enrolled into us, but it really was a small class leaving, a larger class moving in.
Alright, next page, we've got the general fund, revenues and expenditures, and we've got a trend analysis here for the past four years again, and then we also have the 2017 budget on there for comparison, too. Um, so that, that's the budget on the right-hand side with the candy cane stripes there. Um, so you can, one thing that stands out right away to me is this green bar that you see growing each year for the last four years, and that's your fund balance in the general fund. So your blue bar, the revenues, has exceeded your expenditures every year, which has resulted in growth in that fund balance there. So that's a good thing to see. Um, comparing 2017 actual numbers to your budget, your actual revenues came in about $274,000 higher than budgeted, and actual expenditures came in about $171,000 less than budgeted. So overall, you budgeted for an increase in your fund balance of $410,000, your actual increase in your fund balance was $855,000. So you well outperformed your budget.
Question on that one?
Yep.
Does there come a time when your fund balance gets to the point where it's too high?
Let's go to the next page.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this is your general fund balance again for the past three years, and here we're looking at it as a percentage of your budgeted expenditures on an annual basis. So basically, what this means is for 2017, on the right-hand side, you have that 13.2%. That's taking your unassigned portion of your fund balance and dividing it by your budgeted expenditures for the year. Um, your district policy is to have this ratio, or this percentage, be at least 8%. So you exceeded your, your budget, your, uh, your policy within the last couple of years, um, but I've seen some policies at other districts where this is more like 20%, so it kind of fluctuates a lot. Um, I guess it's kind of a, a judgment call as far as what you think you're going to need for expenditures down the road as far as, you know, improvements and capital.
What'll start happening is that, if I don't mind, Ryan, I'll just add a couple things. Um, if, as our reminded the board, as we've started to build our reserve, our unencumbered reserves fund, because that's the important one to me, is that there will come a time, it will continue to go up a little bit, but when it starts to go down with everything else, it will go down quickly. So, once we finish off negotiations, which I hope will take place here, um, at least, uh, hopefully at the first board meeting in December, I just have administrations left, we'll start doing some long-term forecasting, because I'll have the budget for this year all completed, and for next year all completed, as far as at least our, our salaries and stuff, and then that'll give us an idea of how that forecast will look. So our finance committee will start to take a look at that, and then we'll have to start making some decisions, because you'll start to run into where your referendum will end, and all of that will come into play as we start to look at that. But, um, from my perspective, it, my budget was intended to do just what it's done, because my worry is that when it goes down, and it was always my hope that I would get our budget to at least the 10-year refer, and at the end of the 10-year referendum, but I won't know that now until we finish all the negotiations and I do my forecasting, but that'll come out to the board. It's also one of the reasons that we were able to do some of the negotiations that we did this year and get some of our groups caught up. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep. Okay, so the next slide, um, we just looked at fund balance, but the next slide shows your cash balance. So now this is just straight cash. Um, you can see, this has also been a trend of increase. Cash in your general fund 2015 was about 1.4 million, by the end of 2017, it's up to just under 3 million.
And part of what's happened, too, is that we used to have to borrow money for our computers and other things, and because of this, we haven't had to do that anymore, which has saved the districts some dollars in the long run.
So does cash include unencumbered and encumbered, such as what you have to have for somebody's retirement?
Mm-hmm.
So that's all included in this?
Yep.
So even though that's there, that's not accessible to cash for operations?
But if you were to go to, to the previous page, where we were looking at the unassigned fund balance, now that's completely free fund balance, that's not restricted.
Yep.
Okay. So now, next page, we've got all your other funds. So enough with the general fund, now we've got your smaller funds, food service, community service, debt service, and building construction. Um, community service and food service, the two on the left, each of those had an increase in fund balance this year of about $21,000, $22,000. Um, so you can see, uh, your fund balance in food service was about $88,000 at the end of the year, uh, community service ended at about $179,000. Um, your debt service fund, revenues and expenditures here are always, you know, about the same, because you have your revenues set up to be coming in to finance your expenditures, so not a whole lot of a change here that goes up and down from year to year. Um, and then your building construction fund, um, not much for revenues in here anymore, but you've still got quite a bit of excess cash, excess fund balance there that you've been spending down over the last couple of years.
And most of that will disappear now, as you go into next summer, for that, the construction money that we have left. We'll be doing another big building project, or roping project, that'll take majority of that.
Okay. And next page, we've got the crap, the cash trend analysis for those four funds as well. Um, community service, debt service, and food service down at the bottom, pretty steady, slight increases there, and then your building construction, you've been spending down a little bit, and like Bob said, that'll get spent down even more this year, which is the intention. Okay, so those are all the fund-level financial statements. Um, so that's what you most commonly use, that's the basis on which you budget. Um, the financial statements also include what's called the government-wide set of financial statements, and what's different about the government-wide financial statements is that it wraps in long-term items like your building and your equipment, and, uh, your, your, the debt that you have, your bonds, and all of these long-term items that aren't included on the fund level. Uh, so looking at the next two pages, we have all of these government-wide long-term items, along with your current items, um, for assets on the first slide, and then liabilities on the next slide. So you can see for your assets, you've had increases each year here since 2014, your, your assets have been growing. Um, the most significant increase is from 2014 to 2015, that's actually when you issued that 2014 AA school building bonds, um, that's just the cash that came in from that, from that debt issuance, so that's why you see that jump. The most significant increase is from 2014 to 2015. That's actually when you issued that 2014 A school building bonds. That's just the cash that came in from that, from that debt issuance. So that's why you see that jump in that blue bar there, your current assets. But other than that, not a whole lot to talk about on this slide, you've just had your assets grow a little bit over the last few years. The next page, this one might look a little bit funny at first glance. I've broken out the net pension liability on this slide because it needs to be broken out. It's one of a kind. If you're not familiar, if you need a little refresher, this net pension liability is the district's proportionate share of the deficit of para and TRA. So basically, on an annual basis, para and TRA have an actuarial study, and they figure out how many billions of dollars they are in the hole, and then they take that deficit and they allocate it out to all the employers throughout the state of Minnesota. And this big increase that you see here from 2016 to 2017, this is almost entirely related to TRA. TRA decided to change the way in which they were doing this calculation, and they changed their discount rate they were using, and they were in 2016 projecting that they had a deficit of 6.2 billion. Well, in 2017, that estimate has increased to 24 billion. So because of that, everybody's proportionate share of this liability has gone up.
So every audit in the state-
Every audit in the state-
-is showing that.
...has seen the same thing. That's involved with TRA.
And it's partly caused also because of the failure of our legislators to do anything with TRA-
Yep.
...as far as making the adjustments.
Yep. So the only impact that this could have on you is if, because of this, they decide contribution rates need to go up, you know, that the district has to contribute more on the payroll checks and that sort of thing. Unless they change legislation at some point and make it be financed in some other way. So, yeah.
And if you get into the audit, it's expensing.
Now-
Explain that to me, because-
Yep.
...it's not really an expense. When they came up with this, it was supposed to sit as liability, it was not supposed to affect our financial statement in a way that made us negative for bonding, but it's expensed in there. And it looks like, if you glance at it, looking at a business statement and trying to look at this, it looks like we haven't done a very good job of managing our budget.
I completely agree.
And why do we expense, are we expensing it the first year and then move it to a liability?
Well, basically, the way that accounting works is that it, there's checks and balances, you know, for every credit, there's a debit, it's always got to be balanced. So when you record a liability, when you put a liability on the books, that's your credit, and then the other side of that, in order to put that liability on the books, you're recognizing an expense. So by putting this liability on the books, you have a big chunk of expense that's being recognized.
So this is a new liability added to what they added to us before?
Yep.
So where are we at right now, about $6 million?
Well-
Because the fear that I have is someday they're going to make us go back and ask the taxpayers for that money back. There is no options here.
Yeah.
Somehow, somebody's got to do it, and I'm certainly not interested as a school district to go back and convince them that they got to pay us more.
Yeah, I mean, you got to keep in mind, this is a statewide thing, so if you're talking to banks or looking at bonding or anything like that, every district is dealing with this exact same thing. I completely agree with you. In my opinion, this shouldn't, this should maybe just be like a note disclosure, this shouldn't be recorded on the face of the financials. But I don't, I don't make the rules, I just abide.
Yeah, he won't change them for me, so.
Yeah, but now that they moved to the financials, it just looks to me like it's getting more like someday they're going to want to collect on this liability.
And that could be, maybe it's a political thing where they're trying to justify, you know, they're trying to raise awareness of how far in the hole these plans are, and maybe they're going to try and, you know, change legislation that way. I don't know what their, I don't know what their plan is here, but-
They didn't talk to you?
No, they didn't talk to us.
You don't have it in with them?
Yeah. So aside from that, the only other thing I take out of this slide is that you have decreasing debt, non-current liabilities, that red piece is getting down, which is also shown on the next slide. Just got a line graph here of, you had a slight increase in your long-term debt in 2015, when you issued that new bond, but since then, you've been paying it off. At the end of 2017, you were at about $4.3 million on your bonds still outstanding. Okay, and this final slide, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, I just kind of put this in here for your own personal reference if you're curious. This is your expenditures in your general fund, broken out by function. So this red bar, the big one, that's how much is considered to be spent for instructional purposes versus pupil support services is your purple, you know, district and school administration is your red bar, or I mean, your blue bar there on the far left. And we've got 2016 numbers statewide here in the middle, and then comparing that to the district's numbers for 2016 on the far left, and then 2017 on the far right. We don't have statewide numbers yet available for 2017, so that's why we used 2016. But you can see, your spread is pretty typical of the statewide averages. That's all I've got. Questions?
I have to say that the report was very nice.
Yes.
Very clear summarizing that.
Good.
I would say, too, because we had talked about you in the PowerPoint-
Yep.
...the visuals are very nice, I think much simpler and easier, Ryan, than going through-
Yeah.
...the book.
Yeah, we present one.
Yep, so from at least my perspective, I don't know if the board feels the same way, but that's, I think, a lot easier for everybody to look at and understand, for our general public, too.
And I think maybe in the future, I don't know what the rest of the board is thinking, but like you said, this is like killing a tree.
Yeah.
I don't know if we really need it, because we, this was sent to us electronically, too.
If you just want an electronic, that's just fine.
You know, and just have one hard copy so that if anybody wants to come into the district office and have a, I mean, besides this here-
I'd want them to reduce the rate a little bit, because we've not gotten down in trees, but other than that, I think it's fine.
I just, because I, I mean, I would rather look on here anyhow than here.
We just need a few copies that we, so that we have at least something here for the community and then in our own office in case somebody wants to come by and take a look at it.
We'll ask you about it next year.
Yep.
Yeah, please do.
Yep.
Because we don't need to kill a tree.
Yep.
And maybe when Ryan asks the question next year, we'll just send out a survey and just say, how many of you want a paper copy? Because some may still want-
And that's fine.
...to be able to page through and write notes on it or whatever else.
Sure. Okay.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we still have to approve and approve the audit?
It'd be nice to approve the audit and be down with it, yes.
I'd like to make a-
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second it.
Second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Thanks, guys. Number two, review and consider approval of allowing this Painesville Chamber of Commerce to have the concert at the stadium for this next year for Town and Country Days on June 15th, 2018. So, do you have anybody here?
Yes.
Oh, Diane's here.
Do you want me to come down?
Yep.
Yeah, if you would.
Hello, thank you for having me again. I'm Diane Cadet on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, and we would again like to give the approval of the board to have the concert on June 15th, 2018. And we're actually with a lot of comments from community members, community people, asking for the same band to come back so they could bring more friends. They were very happy with the venue that, at the ground stand was wonderful. We had a lot of good comments about that and the band, and that's why I'm here tonight.
I guess I didn't hear anything from anybody else on-
I haven't really gotten any negative pieces for it. I don't remember Donnie say anything negative. Max, I don't think you've gotten anything negative for that particular piece. We didn't have any complaints from baseball people about anything happening. So from my perspective, I think the one question that came up last year that was probably the bigger bugaboo is, was again, there's a charge, that we do charge for the use of that stadium. So I don't know if that wants to be addressed. I think last year, there were some donations that took care of that charge, but that charge still remains.
So my question, well, maybe Matt can answer this. My big concern beforehand was with all that traffic in the outfield, you didn't feel there was any damage to the outfield or anything, there was no problem out there?
No, it was brought to my attention.
Okay.
Then, and my guess would have been that it would have been brought to our attention.
Yeah, I would have, think the baseball people would.
Chris would have been coming right down to my office.
Yep. Sure you would have.
Yes.
Another question I had is, last year, did they, was the gate on Burr Street open for people to pay and come in?
No, it was not.
Okay.
And we've had a lot of people request that we take a look at doing that, because then the car traffic and people not having to walk all the way around was something that the, we heard from people asking if we could have two entrances.
Well, there are signs up there saying no parking anyways. So when we do that, and then we open the gate up, it's almost like we're going to double standard there.
If you allow the gate to be open, you will just be aware, you will create another concern from other people in that, the cladding addition.
Says on here, parking is school parking lot only, which is what I agree with.
Yep.
Okay.
If that's the case, I wouldn't open the other gate, or you just-
I wouldn't recommend that either.
Okay, and that is very easy to just say, no, we're not going to do that, so we'll maintain the one-
Yeah, one of the reasons that we finished off the sidewalk was specifically for people who were having trouble, so they wouldn't have to walk across any tough area, it was a sidewalk all the way up to that area, so that was one of the reasons we did it, so that it would be easier for people that needed to walk would be able to get there.
Nope, that will be no problem, we'll just go with the one entrance. That makes sense.
If you do it, enough people are going to learn. Over in the street.
Well, just keep in mind that again, as I've told, community members, those streets aren't ours.
Right.
So we don't have control on who parks on them.
They want to walk around.
But we can have control of what-
We do have control of our gates.
Yep.
Last year, this was in conjunction with the fire department, still is?
Yes, and it still is, yes.
Okay, it doesn't-
Same committee, too. It's the same group of us that are going to be on it.
So part of the monies will go to the fire department and part to the chamber?
Absolutely.
Did the board want to address the fee?
How much is it?
I want to say 200 or 250, I can't remember. 200.
And last year, you guys came up with some-
Last year, there were donations made to cover it.
Well, I think I would recommend that we try to do that again, just so that we have consistency. I think we-
You have to find the people that will donate then.
Yep.
We can try, but I would say that it's just as much of the responsibility of the chamber to also try to work to find donations to cover that cost.
Well, I would expect so. I mean, I don't think we would need to.
Okay, I agree with consistency, keep it across the board.
So the charge will stay in place then, and if we find donations to cover it?
Yes.
Great.
Okay.
It's all been approved by everybody, the city, the mayor, the baseball committee, so it's just us. Are we looking for a motion? I make a motion that we do this again.
I'll second it.
It worked.
Yep, so I got a motion from Bruce, and I got a second from Randy. Any other further discussions?
The only other issue that came up was the smoking area needs to be checked out and possibly fenced in. The fire department was complaining that they were having trouble because there is no, or no tobacco on school grounds, and that can't be adjusted.
We also had our last meeting just last week and came up with having barricades, and so that will be addressed. We went back, in fact, Dusty, Velkamp, and Shane went back that next morning and searched the grounds for cigarette butts to see, and they found 14. So we were watching that night, and so we were, are already talked about getting some barricades from the city and blocking off the one area where we think that was happening. So, but that has been addressed, too, because we do know that, so thank you.
Good.
Good.
Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to number three, review, or members of the community, or Painesville Community Foundation will be providing information concerning the 2017 gala event held in, on September 23rd, 2017.
And I'm not seeing anybody from the gala, and I did not send out a reminder, so. I guess I can address it, and a few of us that were at the particular meeting can address this a little bit. The gala event in September was just fantastic from the point of view from the school district. The check that they handed us on last-
Friday.
...Friday was $110,000. Those dollars were raised specifically to help vocational training type of things. Also, that we're going to work with the gala committee to work with them, when we, they're going to keep the dollars. As we need dollars, we will talk with them about it, explain kind of what we're going to do with the dollars, justify the use of the dollars, because it was kind of specific for some things. As I've mentioned to that group, the first thing that we've started is robotics, so that would be the first piece that we're asking for, but Lori has been working with her teachers and instructors, and she may come forward and say that there's some equipment that we really think we could use this year, and that would be something else, but we're going to kind of go to that committee, explain why we're looking for the dollars and how much. And then the $600,000 endowment still is there, which is again, for the vocational training type of things. So there's a lot of great things going on. From my point of view, I just can't thank the Painesville Foundation enough for their hard work on, on the gala event and helping us raise those kind of dollars. What I have guaranteed to that committee is that we'll use the dollars wisely, that we'll very efficiently use them, and we'll use them where we need them. You know, part of all this does tie into the facility committee's discussion about facilities, too, so I don't think we're going to be in a rush to spend all the money, because they do kind of go hand in hand, and I think that there'll just be a lot of discussion as this all shakes out. I think we'll ask the committee for some dollars this year for the robotics and that kind of stuff, and then we'll kind of come up with a game plan on what we're going to do and kind of a timeline that is going to happen. But again, $110,000 is my wildest dreams. I remember Mark and I were sitting at the same table and our mouth kind of dropped when we hit the $75,000 mark, and now the final numbers come in at $110,000. Boy, what can you say about that?
Right.
I just, I'm kind of speechless on that whole effort. And we can only thank the community and the, and the foundation for, for their support on this. We will not disappoint them.
Well, then, I guess it's nice, too, that the, the foundation is going to be working with us through this venture, so, and there's going to be probably more monies for other things as that endowment keeps on growing, and then the proceeds that they're looking at to spend off of that is going to probably come back to us, too, in some form. So, but I like that whole idea of having them also be a participant in, in that role so that the community members know that it's, it's going to a great cause.
Yeah, a lot of the people that participated in the gala will be part of, the people who will help us-
Decide.
...decide and, and talk about that. We want this to be something that everybody supports.
Yeah.
So we're excited.
I just want, there was one thing that happened that night, there was an au, they did the auction, and I thought they were, they were saying it was being raised for something very specific. Was it a virtual welder or something?
I think-
And I don't know if that was a suggestion, or I just don't want to-
I think those dollars will be used on, on how it was thought. We certainly are interested in looking at a virtual welder and a number of the things that were there, but I think there's virtual welders that cost this much-
Right.
...and there's virtual welders that are in this range. We kind of just talked about it, that we don't need the $25,000 one.
And Rick, it was, he had asked me, what are some things that you would spend specifically for, so I had kind of given him a- for?" So, I had kind of given him a list of three or four different things, and yes, was one of the things that he said for. So, I guess my thought was it was being raised specifically for the program, not necessarily that specific.
Just so down the road, somebody doesn't come back and say, "Well, I gave this money for that," and I don't see it.
And that's part of why we've kind of come up with a form. We're still modifying that will like talk about a justification, how like a piece of equipment is going to be used, and then have that discussion along the way as we utilize those dollars.
And the gate, that's part of the reason that we're going to work with the Gala Committee itself, to make sure that the dollars aren't used in any way that they didn't...
Intended to.
Intend them to be used, and we're all for that because that's what we want to use the dollars for, so we're not, it's, it's a good idea to work together on that one, to make sure that there are nobody that comes back, and there is nobody that comes back and says, just like you said, Rick, that you said you were going to use it for this, but you used it for this. What's going on? We don't want that to take place. This is a, a matter of trust on everybody's part too.
Good. We're going to...
We, we're going to, we, we took number four off. We'll have the math department come in in December.
Yep. Number five, review and consider approval of a personnel policy for support staff for the 2017, or seventeen nineteen school year.
Yes, you've all got a copy of this. I'm just going to go walk through the changes for this, just to let you know. There is not a lot of language change, and there's not really any language change that is a, a cost to the district, but it is some clarifications and some things. On page two, there's just some changes to dates. Page three, under section seven, under group insurance, we just added if the Affordable Care Act, the ACA eligibility requirements are met, so we wanted to clearly specify that. So, that was added on number, on, on page three also, under subdivision four of family illness leave. We did get rid of some things to clarify, and the reason that we lighted and those things out because that is covered in the Minnesota statutes, so, and we need to follow the Minnesota statute, so it wasn't necessary to have it in that piece of it, but we did want to keep the piece about requests from the superintendent, so we, upon request, and we just wordsmithed it a little bit, didn't change the meaning. Upon request, to the superintendent, up to four days of accumulated sick leave may be granted for in, for a case of illness to other relatives. So, that has to be approved, but it doesn't change it that way. It was that way before, but we just shorted it up. It's, it's clear, we have to go by Minnesota statute for the other piece, and the superintendent can approve up to four days for other family members or elder relatives. So, then we have to go to page six, and we eliminated under some section twelve, it's just not needed anymore. That individual is not there, so that language can disappear. So, it was line itemed out. Same with page seven, under section five of eligibility. And then we get to page nine, and here we did make some changes under retirement, section one eligibility. We changed twelve-month employees who are, and we got rid of the at least fifty-five years of age because that's age discriminatory. You can't have that language in there. We're removing it from all of our contracts and added immediately eligible to claim their public employees retirement association, PRA benefit. So, no real change to it other than getting rid of the age piece on that. And then under section four, we did add some things as far as where the money would go. It will go to the HCSP, which is the Post Retirement Healthcare Savings Plan. So, any severance paid, any vacation days, that type of stuff, if they're eligible for those in this plan, because you have to be eligible in this, this policy agreement, then it would go, a hundred percent of it would go to there. The same language has been put into a number of contracts. It's a really good deal for the employees. Doesn't cost us anything, but it's tax-deferred as it goes into these plans and tax-deferred as it comes out of these plans, so it's a really good deal for the employees to be able to put it in there if they can do that. So, this language really was taken off of other contracts. That was approved by the people who run the HCSP, and they have to kind of approve the language, and this was taken off of one of their contracts, so it should work. But again, there's no cost to the district for it. Any questions on that? Okay, then, on page ten, we did add a piece on cellphone reimbursement. We do have a number of employees that do use, use their cellphone considerably. This is left up to the superintendent to determine who gets the twenty-dollar reimbursement or who doesn't.
Question, with that piece in there, can you get in trouble for saying, "Yep, you can, you can't," without really putting it spelled out?
I think, I think the only thing that gets you in trouble is if you don't have a consistent basis on how you use it and come up with why you use it. I think the superintendent will work with the, the people. They're going to have to justify the need for it. If they can't justify the need for it, then we're just not going to go down that road. We've talked about specific people. We could have listed that, the specific people that have kind of qualified for that, but I, I think it's pretty clear-cut. Matt has some individuals who use it, that he feels that can, we can justify the use of it, but not everybody can do that. They, they would have to come out and say that. So, I think we're okay on that. I, when I looked at the language, I just don't think that it makes any, it will cause us any issues. If it is, then certainly we'll have to adjust that to make it clear for that. This particular piece is not a union agreement. That's why it's called what it is. It's personal policies for support staff, because this isn't a union agreement. I don't think we would run into any problems with that. If it was a union agreement, maybe there would be a way to grieve it, but in this case, I don't see any liability for the district. And as long as we're fair with it, and, and what we do makes sense, I think we'll be fine. I just didn't want to just unilaterally say everybody gets twenty dollars. They, they need to use their phone in order to have twenty dollars, and, and I rely on my supervisors to tell me that they need to use their phone for their job, and that would get them the twenty dollars. Right now, there are three people that we believe use their phone enough so that we would need to do that. All right? And then the biggest piece, again, and the board has certainly heard me say this in all of our negotiations, is that we have been pretty, negotiations have been tight because our budget has been tight. As the audit has shown, because of that, we've been able to get our on, encumbered reserve fund up, and because our employees really were very understanding when our budget was tight, we now need to get our employees up to where they need to be with other groups in, in the district. So, for all of these groups, what happened is that I removed the bottom step because that's been part of our problem, is that we start low, and we can't hire anybody because everybody else pays more at the start. So, their first step, if you look at the sixteen-seventy contract, was removed, and I added a second step. Now, because of that, it doesn't look like employees get a step, but they do. So, in this agreement, they actually get a step, but they don't move by the number, but they get what the step would have given them, if that makes sense, because it's because we removed one and we added one. That's what causes that, all right? And then for all of the groups, three, four, five, nine, and ten, they all got a seventy-five cent increase the first year, a fifty cent increase the second year. For group thirteen, they got a ninety-five cent increase the first year and an eighty cent increase the, the second year. There's no doubt in my mind that these are appropriate. Any questions on this? Any concerns or anything else? I think it's appropriate to where I go. I think what the board will see, and I've mentioned this before, is that these wages will bring people up to where they should be in regards to wages. I think we're still low on some of the benefits, and I think that will be something that will be worked and discussed in the future. The other piece is that you should be aware with this, and Matt and I have talked about this. His group does not have an agreement, community ed does not. So, we have had the discussion. There's two ways you can go with that. If we want to add an agreement to, or a policy, whatever we want to call it, because they also are not a union group. If we want to add a personnel policy for support staff, there's two ways we can do. Community ed can have their own, so kind of something like this, or we could bring their group into this group, or you could leave it the same. So, that's going to be discussed this year, and there will certainly be a recommendation made to the board in the future, at least into next year. We're kind of covered for this year now with this group for two years, but because this is not a union contract, we believe if we wanted to bring more people into this, we could. Or if we wanted to take all the community ed pieces out and put it in a different piece like this, we believe we would be able to do that. It really won't affect the cost to the district as much as it will just kind of organize things, because we're really, there was a time when you kind of were, you weren't twelve-month people over on community ed piece. Now, we have twelve-month people over there, and that's, there's a fairness piece here, because right now, there are pieces of community ed that are not quite as fair as the other groups because they have this, and it talks about twelve-month employees and the benefits they get. Hope that all made sense, kind of a long-winded piece to it, but we need to look at that, and we're going to do that this year. And certainly, all of that will come back to the board if we, we look at that in, in the groups. Any questions on this? It's relatively simple for what's been changed. The cost to the district is there, but I think it's necessary to, to do that. They were very supportive when things were really tight.
I'll make a motion that we approve, second personnel policies.
Got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Heidi said she's going to abstain from this. Any other further discussions?
Should I?
I'm trying to think. I, I don't think so because it's not putting anything into you with Heidi. It's a direct, it's a direct piece. I think, I think you're fine.
Okay. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry.
That leaves us one group left, and I hope to have those on for the December sixth meeting.
Oh, they're not going to get nothing anyway, are they?
I don't know. I need to be able to leave this room alive, so...
I think you gave it all away.
And they're a lot faster than I am, so...
They're too late.
They're too late.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to take that as an answer neither, so, but we'll, we'll give it a shot.
Okay.
Okay, but we hope to get that all done, and, and I'm anxious too. I, I know I've kind of kicked the can down the road to finish these last few groups, and I need to get them done because I need to start making long forecasts, long-term forecasts for our complete budget, so...
Okay. Number six, review and consider approval of the resolution establishing combined polling places for the multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of statewide elections.
We need to do this every year from now on, and that's exactly my thought on this resolution. We don't have that happening this year. I don't know why we'd need the resolution because we're not. I would think that you would only need that resolution on years that you're actually going to do it, or would that be too simple? So, every year, you're going to see this resolution come through. I, I do understand that we need it when, for, for instance, if we decide to do any kind of election that wasn't in November on the general election, then we would need to kind of do this thing, but every year, so now we're covered. If you approve it, and next year, you'll see it again.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Second motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl, since it's a resolution. Yep.
All right, Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Informational reports.
Doesn't look like David made it, so we will...
We'll start off with last week. As you all know, actually, the last few weeks, we've had a great fall season with our extracurriculars. So, last week, we had a tremendous support from both our students and our community. We had three student buses go down to the state playoff game.
Can I just click through them, Lori?
Yeah, and then we had four fan buses go, but not too many people know, our secondary building also did a Thanksgiving food drive or a November food drive, and the football players came in the next morning and packed it all up, and we had thirty-one Thanksgiving baskets that we were able to give to families that are in our district. They included a, a turkey and all the fixings and some desserts, et cetera. So, I really appreciated the football players coming in and helping getting it all distributed, and all our families for helping support it. So, that was just something kind of going on behind the scenes of everything last week, but it was phenomenal to see both our students, the players, the fans, the community come together last week as we supported our, our team down at the bank, and I'll let Max play off of that. But going on, we will be having our first Dollars for Scholars meeting coming up next week. That's our program for senior student scholarships that is supported by many in our community. So, I'll have a report as far as what we will be giving this year from that program. I'll be interviewing next week for my administrative assistance, so hopefully we'll have that for the next board meeting. And our building is really busy today with conferences. Friday, we were, we had kind of a lull, not too many in the mornings, so I know Bob and I were going to talk about that. Over here, since we only have like twenty in an advisory, we have some time that's, could be used more effectively with maybe some student or, or some teacher trainings, so we might look at that in the future. Just, we don't have thirty in our cla, in our advisory, so...
We'll work with the teachers and have some discussion.
A little bit different. And probably the other big thing that we've been working on is we've met three times with our, what I'm calling our Student Commons Committee. We have three students and five different faculty on a meeting, kind of working with this space and kind of this whole corner of the building, so we will have some ideas to present to the facilities meeting, and I think most of you also, we've been working on kind of maps as far as the school usage, have been kind of putting that together so that we can kind of field questions and have a little bit more information as we talk about it next Monday, so... Any questions that you have for myself?
When you do the food drive, do you coordinate that with Allison?
Yes, and actually, the, we had the thirty-one complete baskets, and then we had some extras, as well as some extra turkeys, and actually, some of the families were picking it up there, and then she is utilizing what we had that didn't go directly into baskets, so, so yeah, and we do, so... And, and that was all facilitated by some students in our building, so it was, they came up with the idea, and they put together the administrative part. I just was kind of on the side, kind of a guidance. So, it was neat to see. Any other questions? All right?
Next slide.
Yeah.
Thank you. Community Ed Director, Matt DeKousen?
All right, good evening. I'll let my, our brochure be my report, so you should have all received that in your mailbox last Friday. Many new activities and programs planned for winter. Again, we do four books, four programs, main programs throughout the year. Fitness Center is doing well. We're seeing an uptick, uptick right now, of course, with getting colder outside and more usage in the winter. Pause is going well, Preschool Plus and all of our other programs, so really good staff, good team. We appreciate the increase. The, Bob said that they really, when budgets were tight, they, there were a couple of years, I think, they had a freeze and a ten-cent increase, so when I was able to go over my staff with what they came up with, they were very happy and felt valued, so... Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Good job. Max Maher. Congratulations.
Thank you. Been kind of a busy last few weeks. Went pretty fast. As Lori mentioned, the football team is in the state semifinals at US Bank Stadium, which was a great opportunity for our kids, for our community. Special thanks to everybody that helped do that. I know like, community ed picked up... I know, like, community ed picked up a lot of work in their office for fan buses and things like that, and just was a, you know, positive thing, and a lot of people were at work to make that happen. Our volleyball team had a fantastic season, finished second in the subsection, lost to Morrison in the subsection championship, was a great match, and they actually broke the school record for most wins in the season this year in cross-country. Finished second in the conference. So we had a fantastic fall, really was. You know, and as great as it was, I just kind of have my notes here, working, trying to get caught up, because no one will remember how good the fall is if we don't have refs and buses and all that good stuff this winter. But yeah, all our winter sports are started already, every sport season has begun their practices, so hurry up and get ready, because it's coming, and so I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, but that's what I've been doing for the last little bit of time.
Did you see your kids lately?
Yeah, I need to sleep, I, yeah, so, they were happy. On a side note, my kids got to go to the US Bank Stadium as well, so they would've been as disappointed as anybody else if we would've lost in Alexandria. So, yeah.
Were you excited to see so many fans?
It was awesome. I mean, that was, you know, the coolest part, I'm sure, for our kids too, is just to look out there. I'm sure the state high school league would've loved if we would've won that game somehow, so that could've brought a crowd again. I mean, it was fantastic, it's, you know, I'd explained to, to somebody once already, you know, we won in the state quarterfinals against Barnesville, and I, as a coach, enjoyed that win from the field to the locker room. And then all you do is immediately begin thinking about the next game and all of the stuff that entails, and so for me, yeah, I just have to step back and look back at it and think about the experience, and, and it was incredible, you know, at the time. It's, you're just trying to do everything you can to, to also compete when you're there, so. But yeah, it was incredible, what a, you know, we rode through town, didn't know you could take that long to get out of town from the high school to the cities, but, you know, there's just so many things that'll be so memorable for everybody that was a part of it, and even for the fans and for the student body that wasn't on the football team, were able to experience that in unique ways. And so, yeah, it was incredible. There, you know, we had out-of-town radio stations covering us and stuff for the fans that didn't go to some of the section playoff and state quarterfinal playoffs, so, yeah, it was fantastic.
Thanks for the memories.
Moving on, then, winter, do you have any numbers yet on, on what we have for participation?
I mean, practices literally for boys' sports started on Monday, which was yesterday.
I just didn't know.
So, I mean, I...
Gymnastics, maybe dance team, what we're at?
Yeah, I don't, so, we, we don't have one of our office staff in the office who does the registration stuff and takes that. Yeah, so, I mean, I peeked my head in the gym yesterday and in the wrestling room. I, you know, I know our girls' basketball numbers have increased, that's obviously started a week ago, but as far as the exact numbers, no, I don't really know. We'll have all three levels, boys' and girls' basketball, which is good, and...
Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
All right, community ed, Cheryl.
Continuing ed.
Oh, continuing ed, continuing ed. You are down here already, I guess.
That's pretty much the compiling of the continuing education that the teachers are required to do to keep their license shirt. And they streamlined the paperwork this time around. There was so much paperwork and so many pieces of paper to juggle, and so much of it's online and electronic, that we streamlined the paperwork and it works out much better. And suicide prevention's been added as a requirement, not in conjunction with other training, it's an additional requirement. So now we're tracking that also. But otherwise, everything is going well, people are turning in their paperwork, it looks good.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great resource for our staff to have that committee.
All right, WCED report.
And I can report on, pardon Lou. He was at the meeting, we went over the audit, so they went through the same process that we went through today, and they did approve the audit for the WCED. Program updates, they went over how many numbers are in each building and so on and so forth. We are looking at combining the Beacon, which is at Sock Center, and the ALC, which is at Melrose. We're, we've had some good discussions about bringing the, the Beacon to the ALC and doing some changes there and remodeling. Certainly, there would be some efficiencies for the program if we did that, being able to use staff when you need it, if you're shorthanded or whatever else. And from our point of view, it's a lot less driving, we just have to drive to Melrose, and we don't have to then drive to, to Sock Center. So that will continue to shake out as we go down this road. We approved some policies, the five-three-eight-four, the unpaid meal charges policy, six-twenty credit for learning policy. They started looking at the Beacon handbooks and the joint powers agreement, that hasn't been looked at for a long time, so that's going to be updated. We're also looking at hiring staff for a pre-K first grade program. You would hope you wouldn't need that program, but now there's a need for it even down in those lower grades, so that's also be looking at, that was approved at the meeting, they're gonna hire people to help with that. So those are all things that are shaking out of, let's see, next meeting is December eleventh, Sock Center at six-thirty. Special meeting, it was a great meeting.
Staff development. Heidi?
We are again talking about doing recognition for teacher and support staff at the Chamber annual...
The PRA awards, Painzol Educational Recognition Award, I think.
Which will be on January twentieth. We're also talking about if we want to do a student recognition award as well, kind of like the student of excellence that used to be done in the past, picking either one or two seniors to be recognized at that event. Planning to start, I think we got a email out to staff for...
Nomination.
They want to start nominating.
Okay.
So that is all in the process of going on. October eighteenth, staff development for a mental health speaker for the license requirement has been rescheduled for the March second in service. And then we, also talking about just committee guidelines and things that need to be changed with the committee.
Yeah, we need to look through the staff development plan. It hasn't been updated, it needs to be updated, we need to bring that, that back to the board to be approved, so that'll be looked at and worked on this year.
And then again, talking about possibly including a speaker on poverty next year for that integration plan.
Okay.
I think that was about it.
Okay. World's Best Workforce Report, I think we had that already, but do you have anything to add on?
No, pretty much everything was summarized here, we just get a little more in-depth view of how she came up with the report, but it was pretty much all here.
Okay, thank you. Administrator report, Bob Hewitt.
Just, I don't think anybody gave any kind of report on the middle school community service day. I don't think that's come to the board, has it? So I, I put something together. Wrap-up on that, it was held on the morning of Tuesday, October seventeenth, middle school student body along with middle school staff, approximately two-hundred-and-eighty people, raked and baked the leaves of twenty-nine homes and did general ground cleanup at the secondary building complex. When everything was totaled, students and staff completed six-hundred-and-sixteen hours of work for the elderly and the community that morning. So kudos to the middle school for doing that for the community, it was a great thing. As I mentioned, still have administrative negotiations, I'd like to get that done into the board at first meeting in December, at least that's my goal, give it a try. We'll need to revamp our integration plan, I had mentioned that, we didn't meet our goals on that, so we just need to look at different ways of doing things, so that'll come to the, to the board eventually, I'll give out an update on that as we change things. We're looking for, let's see, I need to set up some meeting dates, so if you're on the policy committee in particular, that's something that I've kind of kicked down the road too, so it's, I need to get on, on making some changes to policy. So if you're on that, be aware that it's coming up, so look for my texts, that's all set it up. Facility equipment, that's also gonna come up, I want to start earlier on my budgeting for that piece. We've got some things that we need to do, need to also talk about what's left of the dollars in that facility piece that we had gotten from the community. Certainly, a big roofing project's coming up this summer, but there's some other things that I'd like to talk to the board about. In regards to that too, I've been trying to get an answer on the Reserve Center. I did get in contact with the person who I'm supposed to contact, didn't get much of an answer on what I needed. I really, over the, the break here, I'm going to write a letter to our legislatures and I'm gonna ask for their help. So I'm hoping to get that in the mail on Monday, that's, that's my goal. I want to start working on the eighteen-nineteen budget in December, which is a little earlier. I know that Lori's also looking at registration being a little earlier. So Reserve Center, you've already heard about the, the football team, I will tell you, the High School Musical was outstanding. So if you missed it, try and get to the next one, because they just do such a fantastic job. It was just outstanding, a great event for the community and for the kids who put on the musical. Instructors always do just a, a great job on that. I'm looking at a draft of the Verizon Agreement, I kind of talked to the board that they're looking at putting two antennas on, a couple hour poles. I had a few, I got the, the draft agreement, but I have a number of questions as I read through that, so I'm starting to send questions back to them, asking for clarifications on things. So before I do anything, I will bring that to the board, just to let you know, I think, if I'm not mistaken, board has logged me, the ability to either agree or not agree to that particular thing, but I'll keep you updated on it. First meeting of the superintendent's search committee will be at ten-fifteen on Thursday, November thirtieth, in room one-twenty-nine at the elementary school, bringing the public to one to ten. Next facility committee meeting will be on Monday, November twenty-seventh, six o'clock in the elementary school media center. Other than that, I wish everybody a, a great Thanksgiving, lot to be grateful for.
Yes, we do. All right, any other board sharing?
Yeah, and I might've missed it, who, who is on the search committee? You and Mark.
Me, Lou, and Cheryl.
Perfect.
And, and that will be, again, that's just the start. The board, certainly, the complete board will be aware of everything that's been signed on there.
I just didn't know what was.
Yep.
And I'll be, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
Now, with all Lou here, you might've been here for a while.
Somebody call him.
Yeah, keep calling.
I'll second it, it's a good female.
Yeah. Heidi, Heidi made a motion to adjourn, Cheryl seconded it, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carry.